Mr. Alamein. Dr. Lewis. Is not in. Ms. Johnson. Is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machette?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
We have seven members present?
We have seven members present. We are in the middle of the discussion on resolution, let me go back, 250389, and Mr. Pfeiffer, you have the floor. I think that's the one, right?
Yeah. So, um, Seamus, this is one again, like, how did we have this much money sitting for this, like, the same thing with the renovation?
For sure.
In, like-
I can speak directly to this one, because I was heavily involved with this.
Okay.
So, when this grant was originally given to us, the guidelines were this, first year is for planning. So, the budget reflected that the first year would be for planning, which was having a lot of community meetings, getting a lot of the stakeholders engaged, involved in the process. The part year two and year three, the direction was to do implementation, which is the community grants, given a lot of the funding for the community grants. We were able to do that in year two. Going into year three, a new administration came on board, and if you go back, look over what happened over this last year with the administration, I'm talking about the Trump administration, they wanted to disband all CVIPI work, to stop drawdowns on all CVIPI work for a period of time. We actually fought really hard to make sure that we could continue this work and keep this funding. And we also, in that time, had the hack happen, so. When we earmarked this grant, this last year would have spent all that remaining money in the community grants category. So, we had, we had the RFP done, we had everything ready to go to spend this money, so that it'll all be spent on time. Then, the new guidelines came out, which said, actually, you can't do that now, you cannot award funding to these entities that you want, you promised to award the funding to. So, we were told we had to start up a whole new RFP process, which triggered a grant extension request.
So, what is the difference between what people could get the money versus what they can get it, or the people-
It's the type of entities that were allowed to receive the money, so we-
What's, what's the, what was the old version versus the new version on the end?
The old version was, it could be to smaller entities that maybe don't have the capacity for 200,000, for 100,000, for 50,000. Maybe they have the capacity for 5,000 to do some, some work with the youth in their, in their area, that's what it initially was for. We would give a large majority of our funding to these smaller grant, these smaller entities to receive smaller dollars. Whereas, the new guidelines were like, no, we would rather see bigger amounts of money going to a bigger entity that has a bigger capacity, and maybe lump those entities all in together to apply for one pot of money, rather than that smaller pots of money going to different entities. That's the, what we've been told, whatever Trump and all of them just really decided, we'll never know. But, we've been told that that's how we need to operate, so. This would have been spent, everything would have been done by now, we wouldn't have had to come back to you with a grant extension request, had everything been gone the way this was supposed to go. So, we are trying to hold onto any money, we want, this was written, this was written heavily, community funding.
No offense, though, but the Trump administration did come in until January, so-
Right.
You're saying that this $750,000 was going to be, like, we had it planned-
We, we had, we had 500-
We were gonna spend it in six months?
We had $550,000 in grants awa, ready to award, yes, we did.
Back in December? Like, why, like, why didn't we?
December, December, and then, if you, I'll promise you, Google Trump CVIPI in January, you'll see a bunch of stuff come up. We couldn't draw down, we couldn't do a lot of activities, what's that? We lost our technical assistance providers, this disbanded that whole operation, yes.
And so, we were gonna allocate this 750,000?
Well, some of it was to continue paying staff, so, but the large, about 500 to 550,000 was earmarked for these entities, which is a large portion of that money.
This is only earmarked for $50,000 in wages, internal, so how is this paying 100% of multiple people's salary?
It's paying-
So, it's only one person that's 100%, which is my position, the other positions are 50%.
So, you only make 51,000 dollars?
No.
Well, that's what this says.
That's the remaining of this year, of the fiscal year, here.
No, this says that this is the, for, till the end, till September of 2026. I'm on the, the first paragraph, or the first graph of the, the salary, says 51,000, but you're saying you want this extension until? It says 389.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So.
So, he's looking right here.
So, how, make that make sense.
I'll try.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round?
Madam?
Go ahead.
So, I can, I'll give Mr. Seamus, that's my time, you need more time?
Yeah, I need, I need to look at, I, I don't know, I don't know why that's only 51, I don't know, that's, yeah, I don't know.
You think that you can find it in five minutes?
Sorry?
I said, do you think you can find it in five minutes?
Oh, if we can reach, if we find the guy that put it together, let me see.
Yes, no rush, you got five minutes?
I got you, I got you.
Who prepared this check?
I would say, I would say the person who's paid to do the budgeting part of this, who is the one that put the budget together, could probably explain why that's that dollar amount. I can't, so I'm, I can't right now.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
Because if you, but if you add up, you know, all of those lines, you've got wages, sick, holiday, I don't even know, I'm trying to do it off the top of my head where that all comes to. That is not far off.
Dr. Lewis, how do you do?
All right, well, so, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and yield my time for the second round?
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Through you to the speakers, if I understand, year one was sort of, you know, the ramp-up period, year two, you were able to execute some. Can you tell me about the services or the outreach, or what did those programs look like in year one, where awards were made and those providers provided service? What kind of services were they? What did they look like?
So, we had Peacekeepers Global Initiative, which are like mediators in the community, they go to different, different neighborhoods whenever there's an issue, they work with the, they work with the city, they work with the county to mediate conflict between different gangs. We had Community Church Without Walls, so they were doing community events, marches. We had North Flint Neighborhood Action Council, they were doing cognitive behavioral therapy with the youth over at the juvenile, the juvenile center over on Pasadena. And then, yeah, we had the Harmony Fest, which is a resource event that we host every summer. Free wraparound services and just a big community event, we also had Hurley Trauma Recovery Center, in which they provided free behavioral therapy, any resources needed for anybody that was impacted by violence, so it could be vicarious, vicarious violence, or if you were directly impacted, like, if we had people coming in through the trauma center that were shot, they provided those services as well.
So, in this next year, how will the services look different than those?
So, with the new guidelines from the DOJ, they wanted a smaller amount of entities with larger amounts of funds, because they said with the, they call them micro, micro grants, that we were planning on giving out, but they want to see a larger impact.
So, what, what type of commitments for outcomes did these organizations that submitted RFPs, what did they say they can deliver?
So, we're looking at social and, social and racial equity, so we have a group that's focusing on that, we have a group that's focusing on outreach. We also have a group that's focusing on bridging the gap between law, law enforcement and the Flint community, and then we also have people focusing on youth violence specifically.
Okay, and are those sort of four things that you just stated, are they in alignment with what we said, and maybe this is more of a Seamus question, when the grant was originally written, were those four of the tenets or pillars that we said we would be able to execute in receiving these funds as far as deliverables?
Yeah, so, so the way the grant, the grant was with, written to allow flexibility, because they knew the first year was planning. So, the implementation would come out of the planning, so, when we met with all the community members, like, we had, we had, and, and I believe Councilwoman Burns attended a couple of the meetings, and I think others attended, we have a big cohort that attends those meetings from a diverse range, from law enforcement to victims of violence, to those that have served time for violence, so. And the implementation and the, what you're speaking to came out of all those meetings, and then, we send that to the DOJ, and the DOJ approved that plan, so to speak.
Okay, so they did, they, they awarded, awarded us funds with somewhat of a commitment from us that we would come back to them on how we would be, how and what we would be able to deliver.
Yeah, that's why they were specific about that first year being planning. Back then, under the Biden administration, this was the biggest money ever in the history of this, it was a huge thing in the history of the nation, in this space.
Okay.
But, they understood that you couldn't get off the ground straight away, they wanted to give that year and allowed for that year for planning.
So, so the, the one question I, I do have, and I think I'll be done here, is the grant period was through September 30, 2025.
Right.
Why are we just seeing it in late November?
That's a good question. So, I think it was, I think it was, what was that? Yeah, by the time, by the time we had to go through everything, we didn't get approval till very late in the day. And it wasn't till I was going over some resolutions where I spotted that this had, in the be it resolved portion, had timelines in there. So, we had to make sure it gets to you by the time I spotted that.
Other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? Any discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, are you working, first of all, do you have a comprehensive public safety plan?
Yes.
Where is it?
I can email it to you.
Absolutely, and so, this is for reduced violence, and are you working with the police department?
Yes.
Because I've been asking Chief Green for his comprehensive public safety plan since 2020.
So, I can't speak to Chief Green, but I can speak to our office, and we do have a plan for our office, and I can email that to you. However, when, at the community safety collaborative meetings, we all, we always have a community liaison officer there, so it's everybody at the table.
So, what are your, what's in it, what's in yours?
So, we have our-
Some of your pillars of it?
We have our outcome goals, and that's stronger partnerships, expanded outreach, youth violence prevention and leadership, and then, bridging the gap between law enforcement and the Flint community.
Is that it?
Yes, and then, it's different, and then, there's sub-goals under that, so I can send that to you in detail, so you can have that.
Send that, because a comprehensive one is going to deal with intervention, prevention, education, violence interruptors, it's going to make sure that we have measurables, some good plans to look for, there's Portland, Oregon with Kahoots, also Baltimore, Maryland, which had an 85% reduction with their, they have a very extreme comprehensive public safety plan. It, it's a great plan, Detroit has one, and so, I think before any more of this money that has not been spent, unless you're using that, because it is very serious, and I'm looking at some of these salaries that are coming out of here, and we should have been doing way more with this. I do want to know, for the faith base, that 200,000 that did not pass, did that come out of here also?
Which 200,000?
It was 200,000, I believe, that came, 250,000 that went to some of the agencies, some of the churches, that, with that, I know you said Peacekeepers, but what are some of the other organizations?
Peacekeepers, Church Without Walls, North Flint Neighborhood Action Council, Hurley Trauma Recovery Center, and then, the community event.
How much is paid to Peacekeepers and Church Without Walls?
I believe 35,000 for Peacekeepers and-
Each year?
No, just one year, and then, 20,000 to Church Without Walls.
Could I get through you, Madam Chair, to the city clerk, request to have, how much has been paid where the funds were spent from this, and who did it go to, and the amount, please? What went to the, and the amount, and what was the outcome of their services? Because we still have a gang problem.
So, I can send you their end-of-the-year reports as well.
Yep, we need to be much more aggressive than what we're doing, because this is not enough. That's my time, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? I'm gonna take my time, I think that we need more information before this goes to council, so I'm gonna make a motion to keep this in finance.
Support.
It's, I, I heard Ms. Burns first, so this is the vote to keep resolution 250389 in finance.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Vote is nine yes, zero no?
Vote is nine yes, zero no, that will stay in finance, and I believe our, that, was that our last one? Yes, it was.
You got more priorities.
No, we didn't reconsider.
We didn't reconsider it. There's a motion on the floor to adjourn by the councilwoman in the, in the seventh ward, supported by the councilman in the first ward.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no?
Vote is nine yes, zero no, we are adjourned at 7:06.
The time is now 7:06, we do not, as you can see, read the room. The time is now 7:06 PM on Wednesday, November 19th, I hereby call this Governmental Operations Committee meeting to order, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machette?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have nine members present?
Hey, we have nine members present. It's now time for the reading of the Disorderly Persons City Code subsection, any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 31-10, disorderly conduct, assault, and battery in disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning, if they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings, are there any requests for agendas, changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for changes and/or additions, it is now time for public comment, members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before this meeting begins, a box was placed at the entrance to the city council chambers for a collection of registrations, no additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment, with only one speaking opportunity per speaker, first public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Chris Morris is not in, Arthur Woodson is not in, David Peachey is not in, Pastor Timothy Hicks.
First off, I'd like to say good evening to the city council, and to each and every one of you. Just want to say, first off, also, thank you to Liddell Lewis, LaShawn Johnson, and to Candace Machette for your support and your help in our events that we've had recently, and the ones that we still have coming going forward. And, just want to say, we've been making appeals, we've gotten approvals for funding, but still have not received a dime. And, so, just requesting whatever consideration that can be given to help us along the way, because we have exhausted all funds, but still pushing and pressing to make it happen. What we did, we did, just to give you a recap on a couple of the events that we've just recently done, we did a trunk or treat, but we also did it with giving away coats, hats, boots, and gloves. We gave out over 700 coats, boots, and gloves to residents in the city of Flint. We also gave out candy for our trunk or treat, and then, we just fed 200, almost 300 people on this past Sunday for Thanksgiving. We had Channel 12 was there, and it was open, and we thank everybody for coming, but we also had MTA to help work with us and support it by picking up residents and bringing them over to the church, and we fed them, and then, they also took them back to their residence. And we've been pushing and pressing and pushing, and it's, it's difficult when you are trying to do all you can, but don't have support. And, and it's sad that we have to go sometimes outside of our wards for support, and the thing of it is, we've requested even sidewalks to be put in, when they were redoing Flushing Road, we asked for sidewalks to be done at the same time they did the streets. And the heartbreaking thing is, is when you are there, and you go down the street every day, and you see people with motorized wheelchairs struggling to go through the grass, that's uncalled for, because they gotta get pushed over into the, to the street to drive, and then, they're struggling to get them over into the street, but now, they're, they're suspected of getting hit. We've had several people get hit. That shouldn't be. The only main streets that we have in the city of Flint, they don't have sidewalks on either side. And you have, and you have sidewalks going in new areas, you have sidewalks going, and they're getting paid for. And I, I went to the mayor, asked the mayor for sidewalks, oh, we'll do it, we'll, we'll put it on our agenda for in the spring. But, that was last year, and we've gone through another whole summer, and still no sidewalk. I have people walking and trumping down our grass, because there's nowhere to walk. And so, we, and also, with that, we have, like I said, we have received approval on the funds, but nobody has-
Thank you.
Nobody has said anything, thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The last speaker for this meeting is LaShonte Merchantson.
I believe she left, so that was our final public speaker, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, seeing as how there are no more public speakers, it is now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes, is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Madam Chair, I, I enjoyed myself at your event on Sunday. I love when we get back to our community and feeding the, the community for Thanksgiving, it was very beautiful, very beautiful, uplifting. I love to attend good events dealing with giving back to our community. Also, I'd like to ask Ms. Zo Lynch to come up, please. I seen a lot of people was recognized last week for coming to council meetings, so I didn't want to leave you out, because you're here faithfully, and you always here, and you're smiling, and you just, you know, you're just here at every meeting, so I just want to present you with this gift, because you didn't receive a gift last week, so-
Oh, sweet.
I just want to thank you for coming to our council meeting.
Oh, well, thank you.
And this is for you.
That was very nice.
That was nice. And I am done, I released my time.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Yeah, that was very kind, thank you, Madam Chair, that was very kind, Councilwoman Johnson, that was very kind for you to do that. I, I do want to say to, to Pastor, I know, when your, it was passed, we only had, I think, five votes. That money, I know you have been meeting, I believe, with the mayor, we're not holding it up. I've asked to have it released before, they stated there was an issue where they were gonna deduct a portion. I don't know if you have spoken back, when is the last time you spoke with someone in regards to getting it released? Because we did our part, it's now on their part to see, to get it released, we're not stopping it. We passed it, I voted for it, I supported it. I don't know where it's at, you know, and if you're, and it, it would have to be through you, Madam Chair, to the clerk. Can you do a referral to check to see where the funds are? Yeah, yeah, oh, you're telling, she's gonna, well, she's gonna ask us, if, if it's being held up with some of, I know there were some who had issues with nonprofits. I don't know, I know part of what your problem was, but they were deducting that from your balance. But, the balance part, I was told, would be, would be paid. But, I do think we need it in a form, that it is a written form, not just through you, Madam Chair, to the clerk. If we can get that, what's, a referral to find out what's being held up with their funding, because that was about two, three months ago, that it was- Okay, well, she's, she's gonna answer. Also, regarding the sidewalks, your sidewalks have been put in, I've told you they've been put in several times, and request, no, no, that I put it in for them, we don't put them in, we send them as a referral to have them put in, I'll send another referral back again, because I've sent it numerous times, we don't have them right there. They, we just, never had them, but I will send another referral back in to them.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I want, my original plan was to come and help at your event, however, I have a niece who has moved in with me, and she works, is, to get her to work, it's an hour round trip, and I just, it, the timing just didn't work for me to be able to help you to get her to work, too. And also, I believe that when we talked last about your problems, that you were having trouble getting certified through the, through the federal system, and that because of the shutdown, that slowed everything down, have you, just nod yes or no, were you able to get through that process? Okay. Okay. So, that's in the process, and hopefully, that'll go soon, and that you'll be able to get your money quickly, thank you, that's my time.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak during special, I mean, excuse me, during council response? Seeing as how there's no one else who wishes to speak during council response, I will go ahead and take my time, Councilwoman Johnson, that was very nice of you, because she does faithfully attend meetings, she also comes and brings good information for us, and invites her, invites us to events for NAMI, and keeps us posted on what's going on there, so, that was very kind of you, very well deserved as well, so, thank you for continuing to come and keep us posted on what's going on. To Pastor Hicks, so, the issue that's going on right now, obviously, there is a bit of a slowdown in the federal government, because there's been a lot of department changes and shifts on the federal level, and so, staffing and everything has changed as well. I know that you are currently waiting for your SAMZ.gov number, but I believe that when you came up here, you were asking if there was something else that could be done, because it's through no fault of your own, that you cannot obtain a SAMZ.gov number. So, if there's another way that we could reallocate your funding, so that you could get it a different way. I have reached out to the administration, I've made two suggestions, I did that today, and I do have them checking into it to see if we can do it, and if there is a solution in which it can be, the funding can be reallocated through council, they will send it down, and as you can hear, you do have quite a bit of support for the work that you are doing. And as you can hear, you do have quite a bit of support for the work that you are doing. So, they're, they are looking into what, what else we can do, because the SAMZ.gov number is not your fault, that, you know, right now, it's not a good time to try and obtain one. And with that, I will yield my time. Moving on to the consent agenda, what is the pleasure of the body?
Move to council.
There is a motion by the councilwoman in the fourth ward to move the consent agenda to council, is there support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. We only have one item. Are there any separations? Seeing as how there are no separations, this is the roll call, vote for the consent agenda. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alameen is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Griesley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Bouchette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one no?
The vote is seven yes, one no, that moves to council. Moving on to our special order discussion items, the first one is discussion item 250374-T, which is the discussion item of water testing update. This item was requested by Council President Lewis in order to receive an update on the City Council's request for water testing by an independent agency for approximately 100 houses within the 3,400 to 3,600 blocks of Brownell Boulevard. We have 15 minutes for this discussion item. I will yield the floor to Dr. Lewis.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Edwards.
Oh, I see.
All right, Mr. Edwards, so just want an update on where the city is in terms of the water testing?
Excuse me, yes, I had a conversation with Scott Dungy, who handles a lot of the water testing aspects for the city of Flint. Mr. Dungy seemed to be ve- very familiar with the situation, and knew of the various residents where they had already done a lot of testing, and had made contact with them. Apparently, it involved the city of Flint, it involved Department of Health and Human Services, the state folks, and even the Eagle folks have been involved. They found no, no negative, or their test came out negative, they found nothing to say that there was really a problem in that area. So, they found nothing to, to qualify or quantify that. And ultimately, they tried to make contact with residents who refused to allow them access after that fact, after having the various agencies. The state tried to go in and do some testing, and they refused, there were residents who refused that. So, it is at a standstill.
Okay, thank you so much. And I want to highlight the fact that the residents specifically said, and the council said, no, they didn't want the city, they didn't want the government, they wanted an outside entity. So, like I said, a private entity, because that was the whole mistrust of it all. They didn't want the city to do it. So, if the city went to their residents, then that's, that goes against what council ordered to happen, and against what the residents asked to happen. So, we're talking about specifically with this, you all haven't made any strides towards obtaining private water testing, non-government related water testing, so no?
Who are we, you'll have to, you'll have to let me know, who are we supposed to connect with as a part of that, and then what part of the budget is it coming from? Because that's not a part of our budget process. So, who would we be looking and referring this to, and as a water testing, because that's what you're saying, you're talking about a water testing, which is our business? So, who would be we be referring to as an agency, and then what part of the budget is this money supposed to be coming from?
Well, I haven't identified the funds, because, I mean, I, we haven't, but, yeah, I understand.
We need to know where it's coming out of the budget. We need to know what, if you're authorizing us to spend money for a purpose, we need to know where it's coming from out of the budget.
Okay, well, what I'll do, I'll go ahead and I'll yield the floor, and I will turn it over to Councilwoman Jeremy Winfrey Carter, because her and Councilwoman Murphy, they initially, you know, seconded the motion, so I'll go ahead and give it to her.
I didn't ask for the floor.
I'll take the floor.
How you gonna turn the floor over to me? I mean, I, I don't get that.
Because, no, no, I'll tell you, because you, you, no, well, the reason why is because you and Councilwoman Murphy, you all put in the referral, so that's why I thought that you may have had something in mind then. But I'll yield to Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you. So, Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
How far are we, because it wasn't very clear? I had stated in the testing, it needed to be Stewart Avenue, because you've had people who died in the 4,200, 4,200, in the 4,000 block, going down to Stewart, Fleming, Clio, to Pasadena. Is this not what the testing area? And then, also, good question with the budget. Let's take it out of that 30,000 opioid funds that we can use anything for, so we can surely do that, because this is important. So, are we doing it just this states at 3,400 to 3,600? I know people have died, five people have died in that 4,200 block of aggressive cancers. That's just the forty, the four, that, from Stewart to Sunny Street, that they have five. And then, when we take, and we said to bring it, actually, I think we said to bring it all the way back, because we have got a problem by northern, Wabash area, people who have contracted other types of disease, which is the end of our water line. And that water has been toxic, dangerous. A friend of mine, her mother lived in the 2900 block of Concord, got Legionnaires' disease. They told her, don't use the water. She, at Genesis diagnosed her in 2022. And so, we have got a problem, that's the end of that line. An automatic flusher was put on the corner of Concord and Wynonna, but they're having problems with that, when they keep taking it off, putting it back on, they're stating that they don't know what's going on. But I know the one over in Woodcroft Estates Works, that's sitting up in the front yard at Great Big O Mansion. We need to make sure we taking care of all of our residents. And so, that one is not even over there, the one that sits in the beautiful, right across from where former Mayor Don Williamson lived, it is a, a one that is sitting there, an automatic flusher, but the one on Concord, which was new, isn't working. We need to make sure we're doing the same for all of our residents. So, expanding that, Dungy, where, Dungy couldn't have tested for 100 people, or, Mr. Dungy, because if we're doing 3,400, 3, did you even do the testing, because you're stating he was familiar? Is he going on his prior tests and his prior experience, or did he actually go there and try again?
He just, he just reported to me these tests, that, these areas that are being referenced.
What's the date of his tests?
I'd have to get him to come and let you know what those dates are.
So, because it's gonna keep coming up, because we have seen people with jet black moldy filters. And I'm gonna tell you this, in my toilet, I don't care how many times I would flush it, there would be black particles, but I figured, I mean, a day, and I figured it was just the sediment, because I do have the construction that's going on from Oak, oh, God, Communities First Project on Flushing Road. But literally, we'd have sediment that would be in the ring of your toilet, no matter if you cleaned your toilet every day, it was gonna be there. If you flushed it at, if you go to sleep for six hours, you would have that ring. And so, we need to know the date that he's saying, or I would, I would like for us just to not, let's just get it done. Because I was at the meeting yesterday at the public library, cancer survivors and families who lost, lost family members, as the city, it is a bad look that we're not saying, let's at least, let's test it. And so, let's test it, we take money for everything else, let's test and use an outside firm, if they, and people do have trust issues, and they have rightfully trust issues. No one said for 18 months with the city, or at the county, or the federal level, or the state level, that you were poisoned. They gave water, or said water that was the color of tan, brown, sweet tea, coffee, that, oh, the water is okay. And so, people have a right to have trust issues. Take it out, that 30% out of opioid money, I'm, I, I mean, I think that would be fair. Because it's, these people come, and it is serious, and that room was, was packed yesterday. And so, I'm gonna yield the floor, yeah.
Yeah, if I may, and I think that, yeah, it is blossoming to a, a much bigger project. So, I think that what I would ask from the administration's standpoint is you outline, through Davina, to the administration, that you outline exactly the coverage area that you're interested in, because then we can take that and diagram what a budget looks like to cover that area and be able to, most likely, this will have to go out to bid. If it's going to be sizable, 20, $30,000, then it's gonna have to go out to bid.
I did outline the area, I, I did.
Yeah, I'm saying that, I don't have that, so I'm asking.
I will make sure you get it, because it was mapped out. I think it's a GIST map that we used, because at that time, the property portal mapping system was down, so it was with the county system, it was mapped out and outlined, and I will.
Because we're gonna be, if we're doing this testing, again, and we're talking about numbers of houses, it's gonna be about how many houses we actually test.
Right.
In the geographic area you're talking about, and then price that out to determine how much we spend.
And I think we're saying to stop at 100 samples, but throughout this area.
Oh, no, I didn't, I was not aware of that, but it is.
And maybe, I sent, I, I will resend, well, we have, and I think we were all on the same page that night.
No.
Yeah, we, we were. And so, I'll resend that email, and I'll, I'll get it to you, along with the map, because it was mapped out, because there are problems in that area. And, and, and it's not a, when I'm seeing it, she was 78 then, and, and then I'm gonna tell you this, her sister died in the same house on Concord, 2900 block of an aggressive cancer. Then, she got Legionnaires' disease, and she's, they're both retirees from General More, so we got a, we got a problem.
We need to deal with testing the water first, though.
Absolutely.
That's, yeah, before, we don't want to make a lot of claims until we test the water.
No, that's not a claim, that's a fact that they died.
It can be a fact, it's a fact that they maybe died.
The Legionnaires was checked.
We don't want to attach it to the water.
The water was tested.
We don't want to attach it to the water.
The water was tested, oh, no, I'm attaching it.
We want to, we want to test as you request.
There was Legionnaires in there, the hospital, it was tested.
Yeah, we want to test.
She got it.
We want to test.
We need to test.
We want to test.
And so, like I said, they put that automatic flusher there, but I, we, I agree, we should test, but I'm not gonna miss my work, she had Legionnaires, she was diagnosed with it. She was 78. And so, we need to figure out, and I know five people in that, that 4,000 block from Stewart to Brownell that died, that's not even including Mr. Roy Field's block with the black moldy ones, so, and we need to get those dates that Scott Dungy is stating he had, did the samples, because it sound like, I did it before, you know, and I just want to make sure that we're saying, let's get some new sample, because I know all the way up to Berkeley, my toilet had black sediment. And I just thought that was banging on and redoing some of the sewer, and it was a black, like a charcoal-y sediment that was in there, no matter what, you couldn't get rid of, and the water smelled funny, but I know they were changing to the system, because I was Flint Township, and Flint, which was a line, which was an issue, because that building was half Flint Township, and half Flint on Flushing Road with a new apartment site. So, if you could do the, I'll resend that to you.
Appreciate it.
With the map, yep, thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I ate your time.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So, when we did the resolution for water testing, it was only for a small area, Brownell Boulevard, I believe, was the area, we did not expand that, so that's what we have been asked for testing, a specific area, and I was looking for the resolution, and I haven't found it yet, but it was just, we did not expend that, expand the testing area from the original at that time, and I, it was.
Yeah, we did, you didn't agree to it, Judy, that was the only thing.
She didn't want it.
We did expand.
Yeah. Okay, well, I take that back.
I, I was agreeing with, I was wanting to agree with, but I guess you.
Yeah, because I swear, we, we voted on it, but we didn't agree on it.
Yeah, I don't think, I think what happened was.
Madam Clerk, do you remember that resolution?
I don't think we can, we didn't.
I'm sorry, what, what resolution?
Through you to the chair, I mean, sorry.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The resolution for the water testing, did we vote to expand the, from Brownell? Or was it, we did not pass any beyond the Brownell Boulevard, correct?
Just the Brownell, the block.
That's what I thought. So, we did not vote to expand it, it was voted on, but it did not pass. So, I want to make.
Mr. Pfeiffer, real quick.
Okay.
So, my memory was, we couldn't nail down the boundary, so we voted on the original. I don't think we ever even voted on the expanded, because we never outlined, we couldn't, we couldn't get a geographic map or something to vote on, but we would address it later. So, I think with, just the original, but the outer perimeter, we never.
I know that we, yeah, what, definitely didn't pass, I knew that for a fact, so.
Right.
I just wanted to be clear that we are only, we only approved the testing for Brownell Boulevard.
So, as this discussion item is coming to a close, I believe Mr. Edwards did make a request, so if Councilwoman Burns can get the boundaries in which she's speaking of, and we can do the 100 testing within there, we'll have to have the clerk submit it to the administration and get back to us for us to approve with the new boundaries, doing up to 100 in the new boundaries.
But we did approve the Brownell.
Brownell is approved.
But we need to get those addresses to them first, before the expanded.
They, they have those addresses, it went in the resolution. We said, we gave them the block.
But it sounds like he didn't test the block.
No.
No, they didn't, so, but what, okay, but what he's asking now is.
Madam Chair.
And to add another five minutes to this discussion item.
There's a motion on the floor to add five minutes to this discussion item, is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the fifth ward, roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Griesley?
Yes.
Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Bouchette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alameen is not in, vote is eight yes, zero no?
The vote is eight yes, zero no, so we will add another five minutes to the discussion. Mr. Pfeiffer, continue.
Yeah, so, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing, so, we gave and we approved the Brownell. They didn't test it yet, because they don't know where the funding is coming from, from the, the couple of houses that we requested?
Correct, so we need to, I think a couple of things need to happen with this, is one, the specific number of houses within that block that we originally approved need to be identified, the number of houses.
Did we stipulate the number of tests that we wanted?
There's, it's just the block, I think it said 3,400 through 3,600 block. So, we first have to, I did, it has to be identified how many houses are on the, within that range, because all of them may or may not be pre, I mean, occupied. And so, we first have to identify that. And then, from there, there has to be, Mr. Edwards, if I'm understanding you correctly, depending on how many houses there are, it then has to be put out as an RFP?
Well, when you were expanding it, it was getting very large, I don't know what, whether that will be true with 100 houses.
So, the initial one, yeah.
The original, the original, I was, at least I'm going by what the special order item is. It says 100 houses between 3,400 to 3,600, so, I'm not sure there's 100 houses in that area.
No, there, there are not 100 items, the discussion item is kind of mixing two things at once, so, no. So, the initial that we approved was from the 3,400 through 3,600 block. And then, the further discussion that we're talking about now is expanding beyond that, but only doing 100 houses beyond whatever the area that Councilwoman Burns is going to get to the city clerk. But right now, we want to focus on Brownell, because, go ahead, what's your request?
The city clerk has it on October 27th.
Okay.
They were sent, and the city attorney, Joanne Gurley.
Okay.
And I'm getting ready, I'm working on sending that to you right now.
Okay, thank you. So, we want to start there with prioritizing the Brownell. So, we want to start there with prioritizing the Brownell, uh, resolution that we've already passed, with finding out how many homes, uh, and then, I think, what, what was your process, what did you need your process to be from there, did you need to first identify the number of homes to decide what the second step was, or do we need to identify the funding source for you?
I think we, I think that, both, I think that we have to identify the funding source, so it was already talked about, so, in terms of the opioid, possibly the opioid point funds, and then the second thing is that, based on the nature of the work, uh, the work has to be identified, probably in a bid to get somebody, if, since we're doing this by third party, then we're probably gonna need a bid to go out.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, I have a question, if we are trying to say that we're going to use some opioid funding to, uh, pay for the testing for the thirty-four to thirty-six hundred block, does that resolution need to come back to have that specifically stated in there, how do we do that?
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, the resolution was a resolution to do all things necessary.
All things, okay.
Which would mean, um, everything that, uh, that would encompass the funding source, the vendor, um, it was a do all things necessary.
Okay, so we don't need to bring that back, we're fine, we're saying we want to look at the opioid dollars, um, we're, we want to identify that as the funding source for however many homes are between the thirty-four to thirty-six hundred block, and once you take a look at the amount, the homes and how many actually have to be tested, um, I guess you can let us know if you then have to put that out to bid, depending on that number, you have the floor.
My colleague over here has the map open of the property porter, and it looks like less than twenty-five houses.
I just want us to be sure, because I, I do appreciate you for pulling that up, though, so we have a working number, twenty-five at the least.
Request for information.
You have the floor.
That conversation, maybe we need to go back to take a look on, I'll point, I don't know what is needed to say, but, um, I did send that map, and we were looking at more. On October twenty-seventh, it is a mapped out area, I did resend it to the city clerk, I sent it to you, Mr. Edwards, and I sent it back to Joanne Gurley, but it covers that expanded area, so I don't really-
That's fine, but what has to happen now is now you need another resolution to expand that, so we, what we have to do now is work on the resolution that they do have.
For the one hundred testing that we can cover within, up to one hundred.
Yes.
Okay, so-
And that number is gonna include this twenty-five at the least, though.
Right.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can, um, Mr. Edwards, can we look in one of the MI deals or whatever it is, that coalition, to see if we can find an outside vendor, just so that our hands are clean
Yes, yes.
Versus trying to go through the bid process, try to find one of those already approved vendors.
I follow you, I follow you.
Thank you, that's all.
So, go ahead. Just go ahead.
Motion on the floor to, what are we doing, expanding it, I just sent you in the area.
Seven minutes?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for seven more minutes on this discussion item, is there support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported by the coun-, it was moved by the Councilwoman in the sixth ward, properly supported by the Councilwoman in the fourth ward, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashad?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, zero no?
Vote is eight yes, zero no, Councilwoman Burns, you have the floor.
Thank you, so, Mr. Pfeiffer, through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Pfeiffer, you had, you were stating, you kind of stopped in mid, you were stating to use an outside agency.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and so we're gonna do, we need a resolution, we have to put a motion on the floor for a new resolution to do up to one hundred, so it's not, but, and then, but then to cover the area within the mapping area that I gave you.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Are, are we saying that, like, Brownell is ground zero?
Brownell is ground zero.
So, so can we wait for these twenty-five to come back?
Yes.
It's not, you don't have the floor, Judy, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because, I'm gonna, because we've got people on Concord, so it's actually, they're all in that same area, they're no more than three minutes apart, driving time, and so if we're gonna say, we're-
What'd you say?
Yes, not, and so that area that we have, if we're having problems on Brownell Street, Mr. Dungy stated, then we have other areas, and I know people will have their water tested, and so I-
Well, I'm just wondering, not to cut you off.
I don't know if it's just ground zero, because this other area, I mean, when I'm looking at the demographic, it's a different demographic, we have more retirees who actually have better health insurance, who are probably not even documenting it, this area is a little bit, that block, the thirty-four hundred block to thirty-six, is smaller homes, and it's not as nice of an area in there.
Well, I don't know, how, I don't, how does that dictate the water quality, though?
It dictates who's going to actually talk about their water, I think we have the same issues, you know, I, I believe they are the same issues in that area, they're all right off of, all of, Brownell turns into Ballenger, it's the same corridor, it's the same street, it's just you go across Welsh Boulevard.
I just don't want this one, this resolution to, to expand to slow down Brownell.
I think Brownell's been slowed down for, but it's always been like the same one, issues, um, it hasn't been, actually, since two thousand twenty-two, it's been the same, that area is-
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So I suggest we find out, one, how many homes are actually, we have twenty-five as a working number right now, but let's find out the actual number of homes, uh, there, and then we move forward with opioid funding to test, and then we come and we have a brand new resolution that the administration can bring forward, and we will test the additional seventy-five in that boundary. So, I'm saying that, right now, we have a working number of twenty-five, first, since we already have that resolution passed, I am suggesting that we get the accurate number, and then move forward with, um, using opioid funding to do that testing.
What hundred blocks are you talking about?
No, the thirty-four to thirty-six, so the ones that have already, oh, oh, wait, I'm, hold on, hold on, and so we move forward with what's already been passed, and then we have them bring us another resolution, an immediate resolution, and then whatever number is left, we say, so, we're gonna work with twenty-five, because that's the number we've been given tonight.
Now, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna tell you why, because if, if we just say, you know, let's do, I know five people died in Brownell, the four thousand block, so let's take care of, if we say, let's take care of Brownell.
No, no, we're saying the same thing, but the only difference is, one, we already have a past resolution for, all I'm saying is, we just need another resolution. All I'm saying is, we have another resolution that can be bought to us, so that, now, like, whenever, whoever, whenever, and so, and, yeah, and then that resolution can cover whatever amount we have left up to a hundred to cover that area, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so that, right, so we're saying the same thing.
Yes.
Up to a hundred, no more than a hundred, Mr. Edwards, to where we, which we-
We just need that second resolution, but yes.
And I'm set to put one, yeah, we put a motion on the floor for a resolution for up to a hundred within that area, and the mapping area I gave you, and once we reach that, I guess we cap it, and then, you know, we will have, we'll share the results and see, um, but count, and if, that's yours, Councilwoman Lewis, because this was, she put this one on, so I'm, I'm, if that's something that's acceptable for her.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Priestley.
Per our city attorney during the finance committee, he said that they need to be, the resolutions need to be approved as to form by the, by the attorney.
That's, that's fine, that, so, everybody here is hearing the same thing, so we understand what the mission is, everybody's hearing the same thing, so we have that resolution, we're gonna move forward on, we're now asking for another immediate resolution that can gladly go through legal to vet, that's fine.
I mean, we're talking to Mr. Edwards, we're basically talking to the mayor you're second in charge, I have confidence in him with that.
So, Mr. Edwards, and this is just for us, so that we make sure that you hear what we're saying, can you please repeat back to you what you heard, uh, repeat back to us what you heard we're requesting from you?
Uh, if I'm hearing it clearly-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, based on the, and this is based on the resolution that is already in play, then we're going to deal with the number of, and I would, I would add this to that statement that was made, we're going to be dealing with the active water accounts, thirty-four hundred to thirty-six hundred, that may or may not be all of, and I appreciate what, uh, Councilman Pfeiffer said about, you know, being twenty-five, but yeah, we'll be looking at, and I probably can pull that right from the water account, and know all the active accounts between those two addresses, so that's what I'll be focused on.
Correct, and then additionally, um, and, I mean, I guess whether it has to come from administration or council, either way, and go to legal, we are asking for an additional resolution to say, once we determine how many, um, houses are in that area, we're asking for an additional, a new, another resolution to test up to one hundred, um, in the specific area that Councilwoman Burns just emailed to you.
Yes, and that, in order to construct that new resolution, that's, I would say that we need to be afforded what territory you're looking at.
Yep, I think she sent it.
Exactly what addresses you would want to be included in the, the second one.
Okay.
Yep.
All righty. So I think everybody is on the same page, all right, well, if everybody is on the same page, and there's nothing further, we will go ahead and close out this discussion item. Moving on to our second discussion item, two five zero three nine two dash T, Mr. Edwards, don't go too far, discussion item stolen City of Flint garbage cans, a discussion item as requested by Council President Lewis regarding City of Flint trash cans that are being dropped off at residences, and then stolen by neighbors who are then putting out the stolen trash bins as their own, sus- suggesting that they are not being scanned by the vendor as promised, I will now turn the floor over to Dr. Lewis.
Madam Chair, um, I received correspondence from, um, Ms. Griffin, and, um-
He's speaking to your mic.
Pardon?
He's speaking to us.
Okay, sorry about that, so, um, I reached out to Ms. Griffin, and, uh, and she brought it to her attention, and so, um, I'm waiting to hear some more correspondence, so I would like to leave this, um, on this committee, so I can give the body an update next meeting.
Okay, thank you, so it has been requested by Dr. Lewis that, uh, we wait for, um, Ms. Griffin's correspondence as far as the, um, trash bins are concerned, and that we leave it on here, we leave it in this committee until next committee, so that we can have a full discussion item with, um, further details that will be provided. So if that is the case, we will go ahead and close out this discussion item, and I will make, uh, there's a motion to adjourn, is there support, it was a motion by the Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Support.
Supported by the Councilwoman in the second ward, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashad?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer's not in.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent, Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no, the time is seven fifty-two PM on Wednesday, November nineteenth, I hereby adjourn this Governmental Operations Committee meeting.